For the inconvenience community.
Okay. So anybody who would like to get into the meeting that if I don't know your name or number, you're not getting into the meeting. That's the only way to keep people out who don't want to wreak havoc on the meeting. Unless we authenticate into the future and everybody would have to have a pass code to get in. So just letting everyone know. Okay. I was stating our city operations. So we're still close likely will be through at least this, the month of February, but we will keep that. We will advise when and at such time that we do reopen based on data related to the pandemic. But we are still obviously providing all the services that we can. We even restarted the processes to allow for entertainer and server permits by appointment at City Hall. That's where folks need to come in and actually fill out an application, get a background check so that they are able to receive a permit to work as in either as a server and entertainer. So about the only service that we are not providing are currently our back, our, well, we will be reinstituting background checks, but just related to those entertainer and per server permits that I mentioned. So we're still able to provide all the services. I believe Ms. Cowie has mentioned before, we do have, we started where permits can be processed directly online. So all of our contractors, construction companies, even residents can just directly fill out all the information, submit all the documents and be able to process all of their building permit, planning, site plan reviews, et cetera, through our, directly on our internet site that goes straight to Ms. Cowie and our planning and development and inspections staff and firm that manages that for us. So that's been up and running for a few weeks. We're making adjustments as we need to, but that's something that we've added for, to make it just easier for folks to access our services online. And we will be adding other services over the next couple of months again, so folks can access city services even simpler through an electronic process. As I was stating, the ethne health has been providing the COVID-19 vaccine, the Pfizer one here just at the part, at a parking lot owned by Clarkston First Baptist Church. So I believe between yesterday and today, they issued over 300 folks were vaccinated. So that continues through tomorrow. And again, we do encourage folks, once it becomes available, especially for the general public to, we do strongly encourage folks to receive the vaccine. That'll help along with all the safety measures that we've been explaining now for nearly a year or approaching a year that that'll hopefully begin to turn the pandemic into more positive in terms of when we can again, at least reopen our city offices and get back to the, to the new form of life or how our processes will be going forward. An update on our construction, if anybody has driven on DeBel Street that connects North Indian Creek to Jolly Avenue, near the Clarkston Community Center, that started, the construction started about a month ago and now they completed the really the restructuring and the installation of stormwater piping on DeBel Street, and that included additional signage, a milling of the road and a resurfacing, and that was all striped last week. So that street has reopened to vehicular traffic. It's along with at least a partial sidewalk down the street and and certainly easier to navigate. We've removed what was, had been for some time parking from the adjacent apartment complex on the right of way that has been eliminated. There's plenty of spaces inside the complex. I think just out of convenience that people were parking right in front of a few of the buildings that are on DeBel Street, but now it's off limits to vehicles and folks have the ability to again, drive there without really minimal interference. And again, the road is in great shape as it's a new street. That work, the construction work of the stormwater improvement project continues on the actual site of the Atlanta area school for the deaf, and they will continue that for at least a couple more months in installing additional stormwater retention on their property. Our streetscape construction over the last few weeks, their work has been work has been ongoing on the four bush, new bus shelters. They hope to be completed over the next couple of weeks as well as finishing just some more detail work. AT&T had to do some work on the right of way. And Georgia Power started with some of the electrical and moving some of the power poles and eventually undergrounding some of the electrical lines on Market Street. That should be here over in the next month. Also, the striping of Market Street and East Ponce will begin as soon as it gets a little warmer, so probably in a few weeks. But they will re-do the final striping and the, it's called the thermoplasting of the line so that they last for at least a few years. And they started that actually today with the railroad crossing signs on Market Street just before church and then just before East Ponce as you're approaching from Vaughn Street. So that will continue over the next few weeks, just a lot of the minor detail work to get everything completed. We're also related to that. We're also in the process of obtaining or acquire, purchasing banners that will be going up on the decorative light posts. They're going to be, we're looking to obtain some generic, well, I'm calling them generic. There'll be banners that we can put up and take down year round that are essentially City of Clarkston banners. And they'll have on one side, welcome City of Clarkston, and on the other side, it will likely have some images of, for example, the Friendship Forest entrance or perhaps Mylum Park. We're still kind of deciding what images to add. But those will be, as I said, banners that we can leave up year round. We are going to add seasonal banners as we had for the holiday season, the Christmas holiday, New Year's season. We're going to have, for example, some patriotic or Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Flag Day type banners as well during that time period of the year. So our goal is to have banners on those decorative light poles year round that adds to the beautification and just the scenery in downtown. Also yesterday, the contractors started installing some of the landscaping on East Ponce, at least just west of, of Market Street that begun early to yesterday. Drive on East Ponce, you'll see some new trees that were just planted. So we're excited. That's getting closer and closer to completion, although we still have a few details and then adjustments or corrections that will need to be made over the when it's all completed within the 30 to 60 days after completion. Moving on at Friendship Forest, that project completed back in earlier this year, early in 2020, later in 2020. We're hoping to have, hopefully the weather will be okay on March 12th to have a grand opening dedication of Friendship Forest. So we'll be putting out more information and certainly inviting the public. We will likely have off-site parking and we will be able to shuttle folks back and forth from off-site parking that likely will be here and in and around City Hall, or we'll ask to use one of the, the plazas so that we can, folks can park and then just jump on a shuttle, or certainly they can walk over to Friendship Forest, but that's scheduled for Friday, March the 12th, beginning at one o'clock. On, and hopefully by then we will have the trees planted down in the grassy area of Friendship Forest, the ones that the environment, environmental committee approved last year, and then the council approved to install trees down at Friendship Forest as well as hopefully having all the interpretive signs from the firm that was suggested as well. On, since it's essentially adjacent to Friendship Forest, but along East Ponce de Leon, the organization Trees Atlanta will be replacing and then essentially they'll be replacing approximately 40 trees that they originally installed that did not survive. That will be happening over the next few weeks. They will be using Friendship Forest, the parking lot is, or at least part of the parking lot is a staging area, but they're hoping to begin that I believe next week to replace a lot of the trees along East Ponce. And we will be having, I think we have mentioned at these meetings before, but we will be having a council senior staff retreat on Friday, February the 12th. There will, it will be a, through a Zoom meeting and that will be available to the public. The public will have the ability to watch and view what's happening at the meeting where we'll talk about recap of last year. And also what the future holds here in Clarkston, reports from departments. We'll be providing a, at least the, the first version of our, of a 2020 annual report or recap, but that will happen on Friday, the 12th of February. More, we'll have more information later this week that we'll be releasing and certainly if anybody on the council has any suggestions to add to the agenda, I sent out a preliminary or draft agenda, please let me know. And we will certainly add that, but again, we can, the agenda is subject to change until actually the day of the meeting. So just let us know if anything else to add. And I'll briefly go over our financial report. This is through the through the end of February. We are still, as Mr. Dufnall sent in an email to all of you, we're still certainly reconciling items and waiting both really for revenue items to arrive, but currently we're really no significant changes from last month when I presented the very similar report. Our total expenditures of $5,638,245 are currently above our revenue of $5,294,293. You can see the, the percentages were 83% of our budgeted expenditures for the year, the original budget, and then 78% of our original revenue. We, I'm just going to jump over to our revenue just to explain a few things. We're still waiting to receive a few revenue categories as well as some, and I'll explain some of the changes. So I'm just going to jump up to the revenue component of the report. In 2020, comparing to 2019, we actually did receive nearly the same, a little bit more on our property tax. We had more adjustments, but still the difference between the total revenue, the second line versus the third line, our, our revenues were, were a little bit higher than the prior year. So a little bit surprising, but that's, you know, good news that we did receive a little bit more. On, you can see in the screen where we there's a circle, we still have not received our franchise fee, our fees or taxes from Georgia Power. We typically receive that in, at the end of February. We do not have an idea what that amount will be. Last year was a little bit of an anomaly because the revenue included revenue, the 521,000 apparently included a three years audit for addresses along Brockett Avenue and a few on East Ponce that Georgia Power had not coded as being in the city of Clarkston. So where our budget for the current year was 235,000, we're estimating somewhere between that amount and closer to 300,000 based on the fact that they, the audit found numerous corrections. Also in red on this page, and as I scroll down are some of the categories where we received less than the revenue than what we had budgeted, for example, for business occupational tax. I mentioned earlier, the work permit ID card for entertainment. That's the entertainer and server permits that we did not again, process during this whole time due to the virus, but now we have started to schedule those and taking all the necessary, you know, safety precautionary steps to ensure everyone's stays again, apart, they wear masks and everybody's temperature gets taken, et cetera. We also, I didn't know, but I mentioned before, we received a significant amount of, of revenue from building permits and what we historically have due to all the activity. And then on the next page, a few of the other categories, just to mention where we did not again, collect revenue because of primarily related to the virus, the five categories listed in red. And we are still likely awaiting a little bit of revenue, perhaps for rents and royalties. We haven't received our bus shelter revenue that we received from MARTA as well. So we're estimating, I mean, anywhere from 250 to as much as possibly $350,000 in revenue that is still outstanding for fiscal 2020 that will essentially bring us to the balanced budget that our revenue will equal our expenditures. Of all, all of our expenditures, as I've mentioned before, were below our budgeted, our budget for the current year. So we did end up coming about 83% again of the total budget for it during fiscal 2020. We are fully staffed currently in 2021 with the exception of the new full-time, the proposed new full-time position in planning and economic development and a part-time position, the park ranger in Public Works, but all the other full-time positions are currently full. So we will have at the, I had stated at the work session, I'll have an update for the first two months of fiscal 21 to show where we are in the first two months of our, the new fiscal year that we are in. And lastly, again, just to go over a few of other really items that we've encountered. We have the new recycling company, Latham Home Sanitation that began on January 4th. They have been collecting quite a bit of recycling. Fortunately, quite a bit of it has been clean. So that's good news that folks that are recycling are doing a, a very good job of placing again, the recyclable items, plastic, paper, plastics one and two, all types of paper, steel, aluminum cans and cardboard. Obviously cardboard is the biggest type of, of recyclable item as during this timeframe, certainly a lot of people have been receiving a lot of packages and boxes. So we're, we appreciate people for continuing to recycle. But certainly if anybody has any questions, please let us know. We'll continue to provide reminders of the Latham has been leaving a couple of reminders for folks that did leave a little bit of trash, but it wasn't a significant amount in the container, but we'll continue to just monitor as they are monitoring as well. Also related to, oh, and for waste management and for our trash collection and the recycling, we will have a normal collection in February. So in a week from Monday on the 15th. It's the President's Day holiday, and although city offices will be closed, both Waste Management and Latham will be providing a regular Monday collection. The city's bulk and other items will be collected on Tuesday, the 16th, but we'll again, send out reminders. As we, we sent out this past Friday, a new kind of a quarterly reminder of, of events and items that are coming up in the city and we listed that on there as well as some of the items that I have mentioned coming up, such as the Friendship Forest grand opening and updates on our streetscapes and other construction. So we do, and related to waste management, again, if folks have been doing a fairly good job around the city, we still continue to see really folks kind of putting out their trash a few days, as much as a couple of days early. We do mention and remind folks that please try to put your trash out no earlier than sunset on Sundays. So Sunday, the night before Monday's collection, but no later than Monday morning at 7:00 AM to put out the green waste management container and the recycling container. So everyone's continued compliance and relying on that is greatly appreciated. And again, we do encourage folks to remind to, please make sure that you do follow the posted speed limits and any changes to any driving conditions. There is construction. It's not just cities' construction, but where we do have some of the developments, particularly along East Ponce and on Church, Church Street where we do, there may be workers out there. Please be mindful of those workers and follow the, the applicable signs or folks that are directing traffic. As Ms. Cowie said, we had filming for the show Raising Dion at the Clarkston Community Center. So we had some road, a College Avenue was closed, and of course they had a lot of signage, a lot of cones and we believe, everything seemed to go pretty well. We had police out there to provide some of the additional security as well as the maintenance and movement of traffic. So but we do, please encourage folks to follow all the posted signs and that way everybody, we can avoid any, any issues. We continue to have a, well, at least this was not city property, but a fence on Church Street was hit over the last couple of weeks. It belongs to the new construction for the North American Mission Board Send Relief property on the corner of Church and North Indian Creek. And as I've mentioned before, we've had quite a bit of city property hit from fences to crossing poles to electrical, traffic control boxes over the last 18 months. But fortunately we did have our, the decorative fence on East Ponce near Piccon Street that was finally repaired over the last couple of weeks. So we want all of every, all the construction and all the items that, all the improvements that have been made, including all the private developments to stay there and to continue to look nice. So we do, hopefully people will continue to drive safely and attentively most of all. So be happy to answer any questions, Madam Mayor or Council.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Are there any questions for the city manager or comments?
This is Councilman Carroll. So one question I had is it looks like the total amount came in about $700,000 under budget for the property tax. Is that just because the properties were valued lower? There are more appeals or is there, is that pandemic related repayment or do you know why that is?
Pretty much exactly what you said, really the appeals of the values were a little bit below what we had we had expected, but certainly the, and that's why we made the adjustments on the expenditure side. But mainly due to the appeals that the adjustments that the county has made due to, again, folks appealing their value, their value or their assessment. Why we had 192,000 from the prior year that essentially the county returned to residents, but our total collections were just under 2.8 million minus the, the adjustments. We did not, really the 3.4 million was really something based on the the tax digest that the county had provided in May. And that's what we used to make that estimate, but we knew that estimate. Eventually we realized that was too high. So again, we made the adjustments on the expenditure side to hold back expenses so they would not exceed our revenue.
Are there any other comments or questions for Mr. Gomez? And Mr. Gomez, for the trees that they're replanting, are they doing a variety? Are they doing the same?
It's a variety of trees. I mean, I, I believe I provided a copy in my weekly update, but I can resend that, but they're doing chair, a combination of cherry trees of the, let me see if I can pull it up, but it is a variety, but similar to what was there before. What, again, what was planted there before didn't last. So it's not costing the city any money. It's part of the agreement that was made, I believe, back in either 2016 or 2017 with Trees Atlanta. So it's not maple trees, but I'll, I'll have the, look at the list again that I had provided.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments or questions, we'll have the report from the city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will save my report for our executive session at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
We'll move on to council remarks, starting with Councilman Carroll.
Hi, no remarks today.
Vice Mary Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind the the community that we have a legal and public safety committee meeting on the 9th at 7:00 PM. And the Zoom details, you can get it at the city website. Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah.
You're muted.
You're on mute.
We.
I'm done now, but no, I'm joking. I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm, I've really enjoyed the GMA City, Cities United Summit on January the 25th. It was very educational and I actually got to personalize some city officials from our neighboring cities. So yeah, it was really nice. So thanks for lending me a 10. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hopkins? You're on.
Just like to thank the city manager for jumping in when called with the vaccination drive this weekend. Both my mother and I did get vaccinated and he was out there in freezing cold weather. Like 34 and a half maybe and high winds to help get everybody coordinated. It moved very quickly, very efficiently. Didn't hurt all as well. I'm much more confident now in going about with my 84-year-old mother that we don't have to just knock everybody over that comes within 10 feet. We can, we can relax a little bit until our second shot and then in two weeks we'll be fine. But thank you, Mr. Gomez, for your, your assistance with that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. Yes, and so Mayor's report, I also attended the GMA Cities United Summit, and so it was very informative. They actually had Dr. Fauci there to answer a lot of questions, especially for municipalities and going forward with COVID. So we, we were very happy to hear from him and making sure that we stay on top of this. I also want to make sure that we remind the community that we have a special election on March 16th, and we have three candidates who are running and I actually actually see them on our Zoom call. So we definitely want to make sure that you remember to vote. Now also to remember that the registration, voter registration deadline is February 16th. So I wanted to make sure that our community knew that there is still an opportunity for them to engage in their civic duty. So that concludes my report. And at this time, we'll move to public comments. Any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes and it is not a time for dialogue. If your comment, public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly and timely manner. So at this time, Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Brian Medford. Mr. Medford?
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to have a hearty thank you to Robin Gomez for handling an issue that we've been having our West, West Roland Street with the local dumpsters being picked up at 4:30 in the morning regularly. This was an issue actually we had, I think, to back, back in 2007 is how long it's been since it's been a problem in the city. And so it's just been, you know, that early wake up was a little jarring to my kids and something that only started recently and Robin was able to get ahold of DeKalb County Waste Management or whoever was emptying the dumpsters and let them know that the city laws apply still for emptying dumpsters and then. for emptying dumpsters. And now they're emptying the dumpsters at a reasonable time during the day. So thank you so much for doing that for the residents of West Roland Street. Other than that, exciting to see the progress for the Streetscapes project. I love the new Marta shelters going in. Those are a fantastic upgrade. I know that over across the street from me, for a long time, all there was was a, a broken down bench and usually just a shoved over grocery cart on its side. So seeing these shelters is definitely an improvement of the area. And then lastly, I wanted to encourage the city to approve the parking adjustment for the market request for the Gashi Mart. So they can grow their business and continue to serve the area. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gomez, are there any other comments?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Mark Perkins. Mr. Perkins?
Thanks, Robin. Hey, everyone. So just wanted to introduce myself as Mayor Burks. Said we do have a special election coming up on March sixteenth. And I recently, along with a few other folks on this call qualified for it. So I just wanted to briefly introduce myself to those of you who might not have had a chance to meet me or might not know me, just an extended invitation to connect with anybody who might be interested. So just real briefly, my wife and I have had the pleasure of calling this community home since we moved here back in two thousand and fourteen. So for about four years, we lived really, really about four hundred yards from Clarkston in an apartment community. And I just recently bought a home about two and a half years ago within the city limits. And, you know, I spent the majority of my youth in countries in South and Central America and actually South and East Asia, close to a lot of countries that our community would, would call home. And so for me, you know, moving to Clarkson really was like coming home to all the countries that I left behind. So real briefly, my education background of a degree in interdisciplinary studies with a focus on public health and development. And since graduating, ma'am?
I just want to make sure because, you know, we do have the other candidates on here and I don't necessarily want to make this into a forum, a candidate's forum. But we definitely want to make sure people know that you are a candidate. And so I think what's important is that we also allow a forum so that all the candidates can have that opportunity. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think we're, we, I've got to reach out. Tim, I think we may be planning on something like that. My understanding this was within, completely within the rules, right? Or I'm, I'm fine if we move, move it forward. Do you mind if I share my contact information?
Yes, go ahead. I, I, I encourage you to do that.
Yeah, yeah. So if anyone wants to reach out, I just had a few more remarks. But if anyone wants to reach out, you can email me at community@voteforperkins.com. The website isn't live yet, but that email does work. And I'd love to hear from me if you want to grab a phone call or a cup of socially distanced coffee. I'm more than happy to do that. So I thank you.
Mr. Gomez, are there any other comments?
No, Mayor, that's all.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to old business, which is G one appointment, point fill one vacant position on the Planning and Zoning Board. And for that position, I am recommending Mrs. Lisa Williams for the council's consideration. And I think she may be on the line if they have any questions.
I'm here and thank you so much for that appointment. I'm very excited to be considered.
So are there any comments or questions from the council?
I just want to say, thanks, Lisa, for your interest. Lisa has been part of the Environment and Transportation Committee and she has been a great, she has done great work on that in the previous several meetings that we've had. So I'm, I'm glad that she's also going to be working with the PNZ. And yeah, and thanks for your interest.
If there aren't any other comments or questions, I would like to entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion. I move to nominate Lisa Williams for the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Second?
Second.
Second. I'm sorry. Any discussion? It's been properly moved in second to appoint Lisa Williams to the vacant position on the Planning and Zoning. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion's passed and thank you, Mrs. Williams, and we look forward to you joining the Planning and Zoning Board.
Thank you. I look forward to helping any way I can.
Thank you. We will move on to item, which is new business, E one, which is the Standing Advisory Committees. And from that, we are appointing chairs and vice chairs to that committee. And so, Mr. Gomez, I think you have that up on the screen at this time. And so with that, we have for Public Safety, Councilman Yasu and Vice Chair Deborah Johnson along with Councilman Carroll and Mayor Burks. And for Housing and Infrastructure, we have a co-chair, Councilman Carroll, Councilwoman Hopkins with Councilwoman Johnson and Mayor Burks. And for Community Development, we have Chair, Councilwoman Johnson with Vice Chair, Councilman Yasu. We have for Transportation, we have Chair, Councilman Yasu with Vice Chair, Councilwoman Hopkins. And for Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee, we have Chair, Councilman Hassan with Vice, Vice Chair, Councilwoman Johnson. And for the Equity and Inclusion and Opportunity, we have Chair, Councilwoman Hopkins, Vice Chair, Councilwoman Johnson and Mayor Burks. Are there any updates or changes to that? I think the only, only change I want to make is, and if you, if I need to switch from another committee is that I wanted to participate on the Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee. If that is.
Is there a limit? Because I'm almost in everything. So is there a limit? I'm just asking. Because when somebody, once we get someone else elected, then we can play with it more. But I don't oppose you being on the Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee, unless it's not allowed.
Mad, Madam Mayor, you're allowed to be on all the committees.
All right.
Along with Deborah Johnson, right?
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. So if there are any other changes or updates, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Can you slide that up for me a little bit, Robin? I will, I will do the motion. I motion to approve the assigned, do you want me to go through each one? The assigned chairs and vice chairs for the following committees.
You can, you can just, you can say with the inclusion of the mayor for the Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee, you can just say you want to approve that with, with that change.
I motion to approve the listed chairs on the committees with the inclusion of, of the mayor on the Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee.
Okay, so let me make sure I restate the motion correctly.
Okay.
You want to approve the listed chairs and vice chair with the inclusion of the mayor on the Marketing and Civic Innovation Committee?
Okay.
Is that the correct motion? I just want to make.
That is the correct motion.
And that is what was seconded. Is that correct, Councilman Yasu?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you so much, council members, for joining up. And the other piece would be that I will ask the city clerk to make sure to put the application for people who are interested in joining those committees to go ahead and complete. So there is an opportunity, and you see the different committees, for you to join the committee. So make sure when we put the information out that you complete the application so that the chair and the vice chairs for that committee, the committee members, can review that and have you participate. Thank you again, everyone, for your support. We'll move on to the next item. And Mr. Gomez? And that would be item, okay, item E two, the conditional use permit request for the property located at ten fifty-one Montreal Road Suites B and C. Ms. Cowie, would you please provide the information for this item?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Mohamed Bilal Khatat of B One Laundry has submitted a request for a conditional use permit for a coin, a coin laundromat. A conditional use permit application request shall be heard at a public hearing, which this is the official advertised public hearing, to determine whether or not the applicant's proposed conditional use would generally be in the interest of the public. In considering whether a proposed conditional use is in the public interest, the mayor and city council shall consider the four criteria as outlined in Section three twelve of the Code of Ordinance. The conditional use permit was held publicly, was, was heard publicly at the January nineteenth Planning and Zoning Board meeting. And a review took place at the January twenty-sixth City Council Work Session. The Planning and Zoning Board meeting with the recommendation to conditionally approve staff recommendations, amending the hours under condition number seven for hours of operation to be six AM to eleven PM. Madam Mayor, the applicant, Mr. Bilal Khatat, is on the line. If you have any additional questions or concerns for him, and this is again a public hearing.
Thank you. And Mr. Khatat, would you like to make any other comments at this time?
Well, no special comments, but except for really, you know, a big thank you to all of you guys for considering giving me this kind of opportunity to, to expand my business into your city. It was, you know, it was definitely a privilege and I really look forward to it.
Thank you. So at this time, and Ms. Cowie, we are in a public hearing, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so at this time, and I think, Mr. Khatat, if you could mute your phone just to make sure. Thank you. Do we have anyone in, that wants to speak in favor of this conditional use permit at this time? Mr. Gomez, did you have anyone to sign up for that?
No.
Do we have anyone at this time that would like to speak in opposition to this conditional use permit at this time? And Mr. Gomez, do you have any, anyone signed up for that?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, and if there are no other one, no others interested in making comments at this time, we will close said public hearing on the conditional use permit request for the property located at ten fifty-one Montreal Road Suites B and C. So at this time, I will go ahead and close and open it up for any comments from the council. Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins?
I just, in, in going forward, wanted to point out, there is a typo in the proposal here under purpose. The last line, it says, for used a coin laundromat. And I presume that's supposed to be for use as a coin laundromat. Where if you scroll up where it says purpose, just, it's a minor thing. It's just a typo in there. But I would also like to say that I do support this conditional use. I think it is the right location to meet the needs of the people in that area. It's completely surrounded by apartments with limited laundry facilities. And there's nothing there that they would not have to drive through, drive to. So I personally would look forward to seeing that join our city and meet the needs of our residents.
Are you muted, Beverly?
Can you hear me now? Okay, are there any other comments?
I just want to echo Councilwoman Hopkins and say I do look forward to this laundromat facility that we just recently changed a zoning code to allow laundromats to be in Clarkson as a conditional use. And I think this is a good example of how it can help benefit the community, like you said, the surrounding apartments.
So at this time, I will entertain a motion on this application request, permit request.
I move, um, I'm, I'm, don't have it anymore. Hold on. I move to approve a request for a conditional use permit for the property located at ten fifty-one Montreal Road, Suite B and C, zoned one, light industrial, Clarkston, Georgia, for use as a coin laundromat.
A second.
Better, Laura? Now, do we need to, Ms. Cowie, do we need to include with the seven conditions outlined with planning and zoning?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if that's your recommendation.
So before we have the condition, I want to just make sure that the council is aware of the seven conditions outlined by planning and zoning. And so is that your request is part of this motion that we include those recommendations? And so I want to make, okay.
I'd like to approve this conditional use permit contingent upon the seven conditions listed by planning and zoning in conjunction to my first motion. Or do you want me to do it all over again?
I want you to do it all over again. Say it right. Thank you.
I motion to approve the request for a conditional use permit for the property located at ten fifty-one Montreal Road, Suite B and C, zoned, zoned one, light industrial, Clarkson, Georgia, three zero zero two one, for use as a coin laundromat contingent upon meeting the seven criterias met by, set by planning and zoning.
With. Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve the request from, for a conditional use permit for the property located at ten fifty-one Montreal Road, Suites B and C, zone light industrial, Clarkson, Georgia, for use as a coin operated, coin laundromat with contingent with the provisions provided with planning and zoning, conditions provided with planning and zoning. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question?
I, yes, I just want to quickly ask, I just want to make sure that the, the applicant fully understands all the seven conditions.
Do you understand the conditions?
Yes, Mr. Yasu, I certainly do. I was, I was, I was actually on board with that Planning and Zoning meeting that they had where they actually outlined all those, all those conditions. So I'm well aware of it. And of course, I'm going to have a printout of that and just to make sure that, you know, that I continue to adhere to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of said motion for the approval of this conditional use at 1051 Montreal Road Suites B and C as the use of a coin operated laundromat contingent upon the conditions set by planning and zoning, say aye.
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 Any abstentions? Motion passed. Welcome to our community. Thank you. Thank you. I know our residents will be very happy to have this. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. Mr. Gomez. Which is our next agenda item is the mayor and city council will review a request for a shared or reduced parking agreement from Mr. Meckham for a proposed rental develop retail, I'm sorry, retail development. I'm gonna have to buy glasses. At 3884 East Post de Leon Avenue with the current parking property for a gas station at 3874 East Post de Leon Avenue. Ms. Kao Wee, Ms. Kao Wee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. According to section 1108, shared and reduced parking standards of the City of Clarkson Code of Ordinances, the mayor and city council shall review and discuss requests to reduce the parking requirement through a shared or park or reduced parking arrangement only through the permission of the mayor and city council. Staff did recommend approving the reduced share parking agreement of 33 spaces with the condition that the applicant adheres to section 1108, shared or reduced parking standards, the NC1 zoning district requirements for permitted uses in all development landscaping and permitting requirements for construction of the new building. Madam Mayor, the applicant, the representative for the applicant, who is out of the country at this time, is attending the meeting. Ms. Amy Elie and Mr. Jim Holsom is on the line.
Thank you. And did you, did the applicants have any additional comments that they'd like to make at this time?
Yes.
Not.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you see me? Good evening again, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Jim Holsoma. I'm representing Heenock tonight. Since he's out of the country, this is our application for our shared parking between the two parcels of property. It is our intention to develop the 5,000 square foot retail development and share some of the parking with the existing gas station since it's a large parcel of property. We have prepared and submitted both the cross easement agreement and the shared parking agreement between both parcels. And we respect your approval tonight for, so we can proceed with our development. Thank you.
Did the other, the other applicant representative, did she want to speak at this time?
I believe Amy would really like to speak tonight and share with you what a great idea it is to develop this vacant piece of property.
Okay, Ms. Amy.
Yes, hi. Hello. Yes, it is a great idea. Like Jim mentioned, the Yashimark has been there for about 15 years now and they've been operating and doing very well in the city and, um, I hope that you guys will approve them. They're just trying to expand right next door. So.
So much. Uh, council, did you have any questions or comments at this time?
They, they'll be sharing the parking with the marathon gas station, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have representatives of them here? Or do we need that?
Yes, it's the same owner.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. Okay.
Any questions or comments?
So all of those beautiful old trees are coming down, correct?
Not necessarily, no.
Really?
No, the building is being set back to try to preserve the entire row, most of that row of trees. We do have one, I believe, on our site plan, a delivery driveway that will be at the, the east side of the building. But the intention is to keep most of those trees we can.
Wow, wonderful. I stopped by the, the other day to look at the lot and I thought there's some pretty old trees. I didn't think you could preserve them, but if you can, that would be beautiful.
Thank you. I thought the same thing, Councilwoman Hopkins. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Uh, give me one second. I'm just gonna wait until it scrolled up. All right, I move that, um, we approve the request for a shared or reduced parking agreement from Mr. Henoch McKinnon for a proposed retail development at 3884 East Post de Leon Avenue with the current parking, uh, I mean with the current property for a gas station located at 3874 East Post de Leon Avenue.
My second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second in that we approve a request for a shared or reduced parking agreement from Mr. Henoch McKinnon for a proposed rental development at 3884 East Post de Leon Avenue with the current property, parking property for a gas station located at 3874 East Post de Leon Avenue. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the, the said request for reduced or shared parking, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Well, we are very excited to have a new facility, new retail facility in our area. Thank you, sir. We look forward to it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you.
And we will move on to item G four, which is to discuss, review and discuss approval of requests from Core Community Organized Relief Effort for COVID-19 Testing and/or Vaccine Funding. Mr. Gomez.
You have, we received the request as did the council via email from Mr. Golden with Core. Uh, we heard from Mr. Golden last Tuesday. I have not heard any, anything additional or any changes.
Thank you. And I don't think he's on the call tonight, is he?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, council, do you have any comments or any questions at this time? Yes.
I just wanna repeat. Yeah, I just want to repeat some of the things I said. Uh, I definitely, um, appreciate the service that they're providing us, but I really feel I think we just don't have the resources to support them at this point. Uh, hopefully, if there is any further, federal assistance directly to local municipalities, I think though they certainly would be, uh, one of the priorities. But at this point, I really am afraid, um, we just cannot afford to, uh, to support them, even though I sincerely believe that, uh, that, that what the services they're providing is uh, is critical and it very important to our community. And I hope that, um, that they will be able to get some funding, hopefully from uh, federal government or state authorities. But I think at this point, I'm really afraid that we are not going to be able to afford it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Yasu. Are there any other comments or questions from the council?
Do we have anyone representing Core here tonight? Okay. Um, I, I do have a question as to what may have happened with them during the vaccination drive this weekend. I understand that it may have been co-sponsored by them and that they canceled last minute and I'm wondering if we've heard any more about that. Uh, that would be a question, I guess, for Mr. Gomez if he's heard.
No, we have not heard anything from Core. As I stated, uh, on Monday, yesterday morning, when I arrived at the site, I was informed by Ethne Health that Core did not have funding to participate in the vaccinations that occurred yesterday and earlier today and will occur tomorrow for the third day.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
This is Councilman Carol. I do wish the applicant was there. I mean, I think I agree with Vice Mayor Yasu that 40,000 a month is too much. I might have been willing to allocate some funding if they had other funding sources. I'd consider that, but they're not here. So I don't think they can, obviously they're not able to answer the questions regarding whether or not they're able to find other funding sources or whether or not a lesser amount would be helpful to them. So it's possible that, you know, if they come back to us in the future and say, hey, we found, you know, like 35 of the 40,000 somewhere else, we need another 5,000. You know, the council, I think, might consider it. But just right now, I don't think we have the information to, uh, to grant anything at this time.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Carol. Because again, that's not a line item that we have budgeted to do that right now. Um, so that's something that we definitely need to keep in mind. And that's the unfortunate thing right now because we have so many people that we need to continue to get tested. Um, but again, we have to be fiscal responsible too. So I will entertain a motion at this time in terms of how you want to address this, if you want to, how you want to proceed with this. Or you just want this for, how do you want to proceed with it?
I think if there, if there is nobody to initiate a motion, I think that's just mute, I guess.
Well, the question is, from a council perspective, you propose that we just move on with this as for information and that we don't proceed in terms of any action out on this particular item at this time.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that's how we'll proceed with that. Um, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Uh, we'll move on to G five, which is council to discuss encouraging plant options on food menus and for all city events. Uh, Councilman Yasu, would you like to discuss this one? You're on mute. You're still on mute. He's so excited about it. He was on mute. There you go.
No, I had to go to my computer and read on my. Anyway, so thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, um, this is a, a resolution, as the name says, in support, supporting more plants, uh, plant options on food menus for, uh, particularly for our local businesses and also for our residents. Uh, but, um, on top of that, um, uh, uh, this proposes that, um, uh, we actually mandate or want to make sure that all city events have uh, some, uh, options with vegetarian or plant, um, options. Um, whenever we have any, uh, city sponsored events. Um, uh, however, for businesses, we are just strongly encouraging them and also residents as well um, to incorporate, uh, more plant options on their, uh, on their menu or on their diet. Um, and this is certainly, uh, could be good business, um, decision, uh, in attracting, uh, more consumers to their doors. And, um, uh, we obviously know that, uh, plants constitute, uh, uh, very healthy, uh, uh, alternatives for growth of, um, healthy communities. Um, and if there is anything that the council wants to add or omit, I definitely would consider it, but, uh, this is pretty much, uh, what the resolution is about.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Any comments or questions? Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion on the resolution. Yes, Councilman.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that, I move that, um, we approve, uh, the resolution encouraging for more, uh, plants options, um, on food menus and, uh, mandate, uh, that there is vegetarian and plant options for all city events.
There's second.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve this resolution to, uh, encourage plant options on food menus and for all city events. Is there any discussion? You ready for the question? Yes, there's a discussion point. Councilwoman Hopkins.
I, I just have a question, I suppose. For all city events, it doesn't mean all city events are going to be vegetarian as such, but just have vegetarian options, correct?
Options, absolutely.
Okay, and that is what we have been doing, I think, as long as I have been participating with the city, but now we're just putting it in a formal resolution format. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so you ready for the question? All in favor of the the resolution encouraging plant options on food menus and, um, and for all city events, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, one abstention, motion passed. Thank you. So we will have some vegetarian options and hopefully, you didn't say healthy vegetarian options, but we'll have vegetarian options nevertheless. Thank you.
I voted for it. Assuming it's all fried cheese, is that not?
You can have vegetarian options, but that doesn't mean they're healthy.
I, I would be the first to say you can live on Oreo cookies, french fries and cheap beer and be a vegan, but you will not be healthy. I've seen.
Okay.
It's, it's, being healthy is a separate choice.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll move on to G six, which is a proclamation for Black History Month. And this is something that I put in place in terms of the proclamation, just to make sure we recognize that February is Black History Month and it was started by Dr. Cartagie Woodson back in, uh, 1915 as Negro Week. And then it evolved to being what we have today is Black History Month. And so we just want to make sure that we recognize and we, um, the history of our African-American community and especially, um, with a lot of firsts and we actually having our first African-American as well as Asian descent Vice President of the United States. So that's why we have Black History Month as, um, this proclamation. And with this proclamation, we'll just make sure in terms of the city that we put something to also recognize it as well. And so are there any other comments or questions about this with the proclamation? Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, um, I thank you for, uh, having this proclamation. And I just want to make sure I mention that, um, if it wasn't for the struggles and the experience of African-Americans, uh, I certainly would not be here, probably not. And I certainly know that I probably would not be serving with you. And, um, I think we probably would not have had, uh, our first, um, uh, African-American mayor, uh, as we speak. Since you don't want to say it, I'll say it for you.
Thank you.
Yes. And, um, I think, um, our country has really went, um, had changed it and, uh, uh, we have had our first African-American president, uh, who served two terms and, um, and I mean, there is a lot of change, but I think we still have a lot of ways to go. And, um, I think in a way, um, uh, I think it's not just February. Uh, I'm pretty sure the entire 12 months are uh, representative of. The entire twelve months are, uh, representative of, uh, everybody's history, but, um. Uh, I think, uh, it's good that we have to always remember, uh, the contribution of, uh. Especially, uh, marginalized communities such as African-Americans in American history and thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I would just like to say I'm honored, um, because I was actually born in February, um. So I, every, the whole month of February is my birthday, so nobody can forget it. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
If you want to know the date of my birthday, just let me know. Just email me, text me. No, I'm joking.
Yeah. Well, on that note, that's also a special holiday, so we just have to make sure in terms of Councilwoman, Councilwoman Johnson, we also recognize that holiday too. In the month of February. Thank you. So if there isn't any other discussion, um, we will entertain a motion to accept the proclamation.
I will make that motion if we can get the screen up just a little bit. I'm not gonna put myself in the motion. I move, um, well, at this point, we're gonna. I approve the pro- proclamation for Black History Month.
Second.
I second that. I second that.
Second that we do, we approve the proclamation for Black History Month. Is there any discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Long aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion pass and thank you very much. We'll move on to G seven, which is to adopt the resolution to refer to the housing committee. To make policy recommendations for affordable housing solutions and develop a process for the housing trust fund. And so that is myself and Councilwoman Johnson and again, is that we, we've done a lot, we've done some work. It's just to do the follow-up work. Um, it's been several years since we've actually looked at that, updated the inventory. Uh, made a lot of the changes and so it's taking a lot of the work that has been in place and making sure that it is. Uh, compliant with what we want to do for our city and so it also kind of works in tandem with what we're seeing with the rewrite. As well as a comprehensive plan. And so the other piece to that is to make sure that there is a policy in place. For how, in procedure for how we actually use the housing trust fund so that we codify that activity as well. And so one, the only other change would be to include, um, the housing committee to do a affordable housing summit. And so that way we can have stakeholders and other people to also give that, um, their input as well. Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Johnson, did you have any other comments as it relates to?
You summed that up nicely. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there any discussion from the council at this time? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion for this agenda item.
I guess it's me. Alright, I'm moved. Let me see, let me see. Okay, I moved to adopt the resolution to refer to the housing committee to make policy recommendations for affordable housing solutions. And develop a process for the housing trust fund.
I second that.
Alright, it's been properly moved and second that we adopt a resolution to refer to the housing committee. To make policy recommendations for affordable housing solutions and develop a process for the housing trust fund. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Uh.
Alright, motion pass. Thank you all. And so with that, that concludes the agenda items. At this time, I will entertain a motion from the council to recess the meeting so that we can go into executive session for a legal matter. Yes, Councilman.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a motion, uh, I move that, uh, we go to executive session to discuss, uh, a legal matter.
Then second.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we recess and go to executive session and to discuss a legal matter. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Thank you. Motion pass and dear community, at this time, we are going to go into, uh, executive session. So, um, we'll be in there for a while, so basically unless you just want to come back to hear us say adjourn. This will end the meeting in terms of any business that you see from an agenda item. Thank you at this time, so we will go into executive session.
So I think Mr. Gomez is just tired of looking at me. Because it says I can't, um, start the video because the host has blocked it, so. That's okay. I'm here anyway.
I hear you. I'm sorry, I was just talking. Um, at this time, I will entertain a motion from the council to adjourn the meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
Sure.
I second.
I move a second that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All say nay. Motion pass, meeting has been adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great evening. Take care.
Thank you. Bye.